Uh, I, I kind of, uh, lost the time to track that statement.
No, 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 I was just saying, you gotta wake up in the bed.
Alright Emily, if you want to start it up. Good evening, this is the July 27th meeting of zoning board of appeals. Uh, we would've let you folks know you could've brought your blankets here tonight, but, uh, anyway. First up, appeal number 2017-35, Troyon. Anything new to tell us? I'll tell you what, um, somebody give him that microphone, please.
Thank you. Hello. Okay, I had a wrong count on my dock slips, slips. It's not six. I actually have five slips. One is actually on the property line. I can't breach my neighbors' rights to their water. Two are the slips I use for myself, so that would make three slips that I could possibly rent out if I choose to. Right now, I have two friends that keep their boats there. Um, my front driveway is forty-five feet wide, and I can park two cars deep. So I'm able to accommodate the amount of boats that are there with my own personal vehicles. Outside of that, I can make concessions and I'll be able to do, if needed, to park cars behind my garage. I have, I have the availability to put multiple cars back there.
Forty, forty-five feet deep, right? Not forty-five feet wide?
No, wide. I'm, I'm able to make the driveway forty-five feet dri- wide if I would like to.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
On my, uh, site plan here, I kinda marked it out a little bit. Which shows the area where four cars can go behind the house. The actual driveway in the house right now is, what, twenty feet wide, I believe? I never measured that. But if I would like to, I could create a double-wide driveway.
Alright, Mr. Troyon, anything else to, to add to?
I mean, um, as far as parking on the roadway goes, um, I, I believe that neighbors take advantage of that more than I do. That's all I can say about off-road po- on, or, on, on road parking on the private road.
Okay. Alright, anyone else to be heard on this matter? Please step up. Have you been sworned before?
I have. I was-
Just state your name and your address.
Sure. My name is Patricia Shackle, and I reside at forty-two Beach Road in Aquabog. I live across the street from, uh, John.
Right, you have a floor.
Thank you. Um, two things. John, if we could just clarify, um, you said you could fit two cars in front of two cars in your existing driveway?
I thought I could fit two cars. Two cars, two cars, two cars, two cars.
Okay.
Actually, I could fit, I could show the board a picture of a party I had at my house where I had twelve cars in my front yard, in the area where I can have a driveway. I could show you proof as to what I could park in.
So that would be four cars in addition to your car and Marta's car?
No, that was guests visiting the-
No, 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 I know about the party. Right, okay. Understood. But going forward, it would be four cars for the boaters, and then your car and Marta's car?
No, it would be, uh, three spots that I could rent out, so it could possibly be three cars. One of the spots is the neighbor that lives at each road, the house that is elevated, so he was there. So he, that's not a parking thing. But if it was to someone that drove a car, it would be three vehicles. If I rented a spot out, it would be one vehicle per boat, no more.
And if they have guests?
Go work off Larry's, like, house, Marina, I don't want you there.
No, I meant guest parking, not guest boaters. Guest parking. If one of your boaters who's renting-
I just said, go, go rent somewhere else. One spot, one boat slip, one car.
Is that what you're telling your so-called future tenants, if any?
That's what I'll, I'll tell every tenant. I, I don't want a lot of cars in my house. I don't want a lot of people in there. If I did, I would've rented out all those spaces since I bought the house in 2012.
So would you, would you be amenable to allowing us to put a condition on, not only one parking spot?
One, one parking spot per car? Sure, sure, absolutely.
Would that be fair?
Because, excuse me, right now, Mr. Troyon, the way you've colored this out here-
Yes.
You got, uh, parking for ten cars.
Yeah.
Well- That's our point exactly.
Where, underneath the town code, how many cars am I allowed to have in my driveway?
I don't know.
The town, the, the code officer couldn't say that. I'm allowed to park on my, on my, on my grass. I'm allowed to park anywhere on my yard.
That's you.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but you're asking us to have a second meter, sir. So I mean, that's not really what we wanna hear.
But it, it seems like all the issues that are being addressed to me are, are the parking issues, not my meter issue. So-
Okay, alright.
Well, I, I, I have ten spots. I have my wife's car, I have my car.
We already, we know what, we know what you're saying. Let's, let's finish up.
And my other point is, um, John's last comment was regard to some of the neighbors' abuse parking on the street, and I would assume he's referring to me. Um, I am the only house on Beach Road that does, my property line is not grass for the three feet that theoretically the town owns. So my house, where I park sometimes, is twenty-one feet wide. If you measure the rest of Beach Avenue, the width of Beach Avenue, excuse me, Beach Road, is only fourteen feet wide. So if you drive down Beach Road, the only space that you can park is right in front of my house. And the iss- the situation that John is referring to is I moved one of my cars out of the driveway, went to church, came back from church, and never moved my car into the driveway.
Alright.
So there is no parking on that road.
I understand, thank you.
Okay. The point being, there's no parking on Beach Road.
I got you.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Is there anyone else to be heard? Please step up. And you have been sworned before, I believe?
Yes, I have. Good evening, everybody. Holly Doring at fifty Beach Road. Live directly opposite fifty-three Beach Road. Okay, I'd just like to say, there was a misstatement, um, during testimony that the, um, house in question is next to his father's property. There actually is two other residences in between where it was suggested that the overflow could park at his father's property. They do not connect. There are two other properties in between. So I'd just like to clarify that.
Okay.
And I'd just like to say that, right now, and I just, I have a picture too, if you'd like to see it, of all the cars parked on the road of a party.
I think we're pretty well aware of that.
Yeah, okay. And the fact that there is a commercial vehicle, and like John said, he can park anywhere on his property. There are no regulations in this town. There could be commercial vehicles, they could be any vehicle, as long as it is inspected or registered. Now, he does have a vehicle, that's a box truck, that is not inspected and doesn't have plates on it. And that is parked in between his house and the house next door.
Okay.
And that is parked there in retaliation for when I reported him for a fireworks session.
We're getting into neighborhood stuff now. No, no.
Okay, so the theory is here, past behavior predicates future behavior. All this, I can do this, I can do that, I can put parking behind, but once a per- a variance is issued for electric, there's no enforcing any kind of parking. And this is the situation. That it is a one-lane road, it's not a legal with road, and there are often many vehicles, and there was just another vehicle added to the collection. And there is no parking there. But like you said, yeah, he could park vehicles all over his lawn, and still, but that's affects the quality of life issue for everybody else. And that's what I'd just like to say.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Mr. Troyon, I'm just, uh, gonna ask you a question. Um, have you ever thought about putting your parking all the way in the backyard, with a long driveway going to it that's shielded from the street, where your neighbors don't see the parking?
The shaded areas, they won't be able to see it from the street. If I plant buffers as well.
What's that?
If I plant buffers where the white, where the, the shaded areas are, I could have things blocked.
No, you're looking for s-
I know, but you're looking for six cars in, in the- But I don't, I don't wanna put parking all the way in the back by the bulkhead.
You don't?
No, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna plant all the way back there.
I'm just, oh, I'm saying that for the neighbors' concerns, if you put a parking lot back there somewhere with a long driveway going up the side of the house, you would probably have a lot of neighbors you got along with. I said you would probably have a lot of neighbors that you're friendly with if, if you had a long driveway going up the left side of your property and had a parking area all the way in the back closer to these slips. Alright, so I'm, I'm trying to come up with a reasonable thing, but, you know, you know, you're asking us to approve something here. And I'm, and I'm asking you about possible solutions, but you, you, you have your own ideas, so I'm, I'm trying to help you, but you don't wanna help.
I understand that. I understand that.
No, I don't think you do. Okay, alright.
Alright, nobody else to be heard on this matter? Alright, the boards are gonna do a reserve decision, so we have a decision for you at the next meeting. There'll be no more testimony taken. So I move to, uh, close this hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we see you folks at the next meeting, which is?
Troyon, you want this back?
Yes.
August tenth? August tenth. Okay, fine, we'll put in with the paperwork.
Do I have to come, or can I just?
You don't have to be here. Reserve a decision. The reserve decision, by the way, is filed with the county clerk, uh, the town clerk after a two-week period. If we decide. And of course, anybody in two weeks will come back.
What date is that?
Okay. Okay, folks, next up is appeal number two thousand seventeen dash forty, Seth Walker. Got some diagrams for us?
Wonderful.
Okay, let's hear what you've done.
Okay, so Nick Waitrich, one fifty-five Shore Road. I was here at the last two meetings.
Oh, I'm sorry. Stay on. You gave your name and your, get ahead of it.
Essentially, there was initial, initially a concern by the neighbors that, about the property on the rear of it, that the solar array would be visible, and that was their primary concern. Last meeting, they kind of hashed everything out and agreed that instead of having a longer skinny ray, doing a more consolidated, taller array, shifted over to the right part of the property, which actually has trees that are not allowed to be removed because it serves as a buffer for the road. And both neighbors were in agreement over that, and as I understood it last time, really the only thing that we're missing was an updated land survey, and as you can see, the updated land survey is in front of you.
Okay. Any of the neighbors here? Well, I'm sure if they were in the opposite, opposition, they would be here.
Yeah.
I know you were speaking to them that night, so, great.
Yeah.
Glad you worked it out.
How far is this off the property line now, on the back?
Um, so, what we found out was that the property line actually extends three feet past the fence, so, in, into the, what would visually appear as the neighbor's yard. Um, and then, so then this will come off another, I believe, three feet from the fence line, so a total of six feet from the property line, which the neighbors were totally okay with.
So how's the reading go?
On here- Is, is there any dimension showing the distance from the property line, or is it very small?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I, uh, that's the line.
Usually on a survey, you would show us the dimensions of the setbacks.
Yeah, because theoretically, if you're gonna put it where you say you're putting it and grant it, we have to have an actual distance.
Were you saying six feet off the property line? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I hate to see you come back, and I don't want you to come back.
Can we?
So we can just change it?
Scale it off right now from the property line.
Unless we just said six, six feet in the, in the, in the reading.
It's not six feet.
What's that?
It's not six feet.
That's what he said before?
Yeah, that's what he says.
So if he agrees to six feet, we just say that, we just-
Yeah, but what if it's five feet?
It's actually four foot. On the scale.
Okay.
Because they don't know they don't have a three feet.
Who's fence are, usually whose fence are they claiming to be? I'm a little confused.
What's that, sorry? Whose fence are they showing?
The owner of, who's putting up the solar panel.
Yes.
That his fence or the neighbor's fence?
It's technically his fence.
The guy with the solar panel?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no encroaching?
No, no encroaching. And it is, it's property line actually extends three feet beyond that.
Okay, well, you guys can write it the way you'd like.
Nobody else to be heard on this matter? Okay, what's up with reading?
I move that the determination of Seth Walker, Green Leaf Solar, dash eleven Hidden Pond Path, Waiting River, variance two, in a relief from provisions of chapter three oh one, section twenty-eight, nine, A, one, C, where the proposed accessory ground mount solar PV system is six feet from the property line, where the minimum required is twenty feet, and is twenty-eight feet from a side-street line, where the minimum is required sixty feet. Be granted. In accordance with the application and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, is filed with the building inspector.
Second.
The determination will be available when the town clerk within two weeks.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
I'm staying.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal has been granted. Best of luck and-
Great, thank you very much.
In about two weeks, you can go to the building. All the paperwork should be raised.
Okay, great. Um, do you guys need more copies, or?
You should leave me with-
I left one in the folder.
Okay, if you could leave me with at least four, because when I-
Okay, no problem.
That's what happens, yeah.
Goodnight, ladies.
Alright, thank you. Goodnight.
Yeah, that's what he says, though.
Kim, I think-
Emily, if you're around.
Next, we have appeal number two thousand seventeen dash forty for DK BP Real Estate LLC, six oh eight Northville Turnpike Riverhead, where variance is to enter relief from the provisions of chapter three oh one, section two 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 B, where the proposed establishment of a childcare slash daycare facility represents a change from the non-conforming professional office use to another non-conforming use within the zoning district, thus requiring a special exception. Thank you.
Good evening. If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
Uh, Isaac Israel, uh, one oh seven Promenade Drive, Aquabog. Um, good, good evening. Um, I'm Isaac Israel. Tonight I stand before you as the applicant on behalf of the property owner in the contract vendee. I've applied to the Town of Riverhead zoning board to request a variance two and/or relief from the provisions of chapter three oh one, section two 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 B, um, where the proposed establishment of childcare daycare facility represents a change from the non-conforming professional office to another non-conforming use within the zoning district, thus requiring a special exception for the property located six oh eight Northville Turnpike. Six oh eight Northville Turnpike is a approximately forty-three hundred square foot office building located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Northville Turnpike and Elton Street. The intersection has this non-conforming office building on one corner, a non-conforming automobile repair shop on the northwest corner, a non-conforming deli on the southwest corner, and a single-family residence on the southeast corner. The zoning district of the subject property and all of the adjacent properties nearby is RA forty. The property has been an accounting office since the nineteen sixties and was expanded in nineteen eighty-six to its current size today. The current owners, Markowitz, Fennell and Bank LLP, uh, through their real estate company, DK BP Real Estate LLC, had outgrown this location and have relocated to five five two East Main Street and approximately seven thousand square feet. I have been marketing the property for sale, uh, since August two thousand fifteen. Um, because of the large amount of office, vacant office space, and the location of the buil- and the building's location on the side, side street, it has been a challenge finding a suitor until now. The contract vendee, Bright and Early Discoveries, started in two thousand and sixteen. It is a nursery school daycare center. Um, currently, they have an enrollment of sixteen and are at full capacity with a waiting list. They're already located in Riverhead at one two five Union Avenue. They are licensed by the Office of Child and Family Services. They have chosen this location because it is a central location, convenient for parents, it has ample parking, and is a larger space than their current location. We feel that the special exception will not produce an impact on adjacent properties or the neighborhood because the business will, will be located within the existing structure. The special exception is not substantial because in the RA forty zoning district, nursery care and, uh, nursery school and daycare are permitted by a special permit within a residence in the RA forty district. The current structure doesn't have a kitchen or shower bathing facilities, making it suitable for a residence. Special exception cannot be achieved by some alternate means, as the building is a vacant office building partially surrounded by other non-conforming uses, and no other allowed uses are within the RA forty zoning district that would better lend themselves to the property. The special exception will not cause an adverse effect on the environment because the building already exists and is connected to public water and public sewer. And the, uh, proposed use will reuse the current structure. The permitted uses within the RA forty district are single-family residence, attached residences, and non-commercial parks and playgrounds. The seller cannot realize a reasonable return for each of the permitted uses on the property as the building was substantially modified and expanded in nineteen eighty-six, and it would not be cost-effective to make the building comply to all the building codes necessary to become a residence. The structure is approximately forty-three hundred square feet, which is significantly larger than any of the surrounding homes, limiting the resale value as a residence. The alleged hardship, um, requiring the special exception is unique as the property is improved with an office building. There are other, uh, the deli use and the automotive use, um, as well in the area. Uh, we feel that the special exception will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood as the building already exists and has used has been present for over fifty years in the neighborhood. The current owners have always, uh, well-maintained it, it's well landscaped, fits within the neighborhood, and we feel that this u- the use will continue in the existing structure. That's it.
Any board have any questions?
They stated that the back to them occupancy is sixteen?
Uh, no, their current location is sixteen, um, where they are now.
So this is larger, so they'll have more.
They'll be, they'll be able to have more, more students.
Are they looking to have a playground there too, or?
Um, eventually, yes.
Where would you put it?
Um, where, it could either go in the, there's more parking than what's required under the code, so it could either go in the rear or it can go in the front, but we'll have to see when we go through the planning process. What's that?
It goes to dumpster.
Any of the neighbors? Anybody have any, anything to say about this variance? Well, just step up there and give your support. If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
My name is Laura Cohen. I'm a resident of two fifteen Fischel Avenue, um, which just so happens to be, I guess you could say, uh, within the vicinity of the proposed, um, change in, in the zoning. Um, my son has been with Bright and Early Discoveries for about a year. I guess we're, we just passed the one-year anniversary of the facility on Union Avenue. Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, personally, I think it's a top-tier facility. Uh, the owner, who's applicant here today, Jen Lemina, uh, is outstanding. She's, she's, uh, got numerous credentials. I think, uh, a testament to her dedication to this community, as well as her husband. Um, they're heavily vested in investing in the community and providing quality over quantity, I guess you could say, to the children of this facility, or this community. Um, I think the fact that they've outgrown the facility they've been in for one year so quickly, within, you know, twelve-month period, uh, is truly a testament to the, to the quality of childcare that she provides. And I think that's something that's truly been lacking in this community, is quality childcare. Um, you know, for example, they take no shortcuts when it comes to these children. Um, you know, she, she feeds them healthy food, organic food. Um, you know, the teacher is really to, you know, care about these kids. So, you know, this isn't just an in-and-out facility and, and high turnover of children. These kids, you know, really stay, and, you know, Jen calls them her babies. So, you know, she takes a, a true dedication to these kids. So, um, I think this is something we, we really need in the facility. I don't know about, you know, it affecting the character of the community. Um, I think if anything, I prefer to see quality childcare around here rather than a vacant building, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mom. Anyone else to be heard? Well, if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes, I do.
Just state your name and your address.
My name is Thea Cohen. I live at seven sixty-one East Main Street. And, uh, that was my daughter who just spoke with you, and that is my grandson, who has been one year at, um, at Jen's daycare. And all I can say is that little boy is happy every day to go to school, and that says a lot. He is learning a lot. There's discipline, there's structure, there's playtime, and, uh, my daughter can go to work. She's a full-time career woman. She can go to work at peace, and, um, and I pick him up when I can and take him when I can. So I also feel that that is a great spot for, for a daycare. And, um, on Union Avenue, where the school is now, there has been no complaints. It's been very quiet. I go pick up my grandson. There's no problems, and, um, and she's been running a dynamic daycare center there. I have a lot of faith and trust in her, and she does, her credentials are outstanding. That, that's the owner, Jen. And so, uh, I, I'm all for it, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're all for happy kids ourselves.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Okay.
Okay.
Any ready? Any, anybody have any problems?
Shoot. Mr. Chairman, I move that the determination of DK BP Real Estate LLC, six oh eight Northville Turnpike Riverhead, for variances to and a relief from the provisions of chapter three oh one, section two 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 B, where the proposed establishment of a childcare daycare facility represents a change from the non-conforming professional use to another non-conforming use within a zoning district, thus requiring a special exception. Be granted, in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. A written determination will be available with the town clerk within two weeks.
So moved.
Okay. Leroy?
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. See, appeal's been granted.
Thank you.
And two weeks from now, you've done the building apartment, continue on with the process.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Best of luck, folks.
Headlock.
I think it is. I think it is.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Alright, what's your name? Read another.
Next is appeal number two thousand seventeen dash zero four four for Sean Vigliata Hubbard at eighty-two Oakwood Drive, Waiting River, for variances two and or relief from the provisions of chapter three oh one, section thirty-four, where the proposed addition has a side yard setback of fourteen point six feet, where the minimum required is twenty feet, and the proposed accessory deck has a setback of seventeen point one feet, where the minimum required is twenty feet.
Hey, if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and your address.
Uh, my name is John Van Velsoar, architect, and, uh, my, uh, home address is seventy-four Josephine Drive, Waiting River, New York.
You have the floor.
Okay, I'm here representing all my client, um, with regard to the, uh, variance requirement, uh, that's, that's necessary in order to put a, um, four hundred and thirty square foot proposed addition onto the north side of the existing thirteen hundred and forty square foot, single-story residence. Uh, the addition will be for, uh, much-needed living space. Uh, there's an existing deck in that area that will be removed, uh, and then replaced, uh, behind the addition, uh, once that hopefully is approved. I believe you have the plans, I, in front of you, I guess. If you have any questions.
His name?
Melanie from Nowland.
Oh, Melanie.
I'm sorry?
Your mailings.
Oh.
So, the addition is going on top of the pre-existing deck, is that correct?
No, so the, the deck is going to be removed, uh, a new footing and foundation, basement area, full...
But the side, in that area?
Yes, in that area, yes.
And then the new deck is gonna go behind it?
The new deck will go behind it, yes, and quite, approximately twice the size of what's there now. The grade drops off severely as you go to the north, so, uh, it's almost necessary in order to accommodate living space outside, really, to have the deck i- in that area.
For what, anybody have any comments, questions? Any next-door neighbors have the same? They're looking pretty good. Let's see what happens. Try to see the reading.
I move that appeal number seventeen dash forty-four, Sean Vigliata Hubbard. I move that determination at eighty-two Oakwood Drive, Waiting River, for variances two and a relief from the provisions of chapter three oh one, section thirty-four, where the proposed addition has a side yard setback of fourteen point six feet, where the minimum required is twenty feet. And the proposed accessory deck has a setback of seventeen point one feet, where the minimum required is twenty feet. Be granted in accordance with the application and the sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. The written determination will be available with the town clerk within two weeks.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
And I vote aye. See, appeal's been granted, and like I said, in two weeks, continue on with the project. Best of luck.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We'd like to see smiling faces later here. Yeah.
I thought so. Jimmy!
I make a motion, we accept... I make a motion, we accept the minutes of the last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Sure? Okay.
All in favor, we got the ayes, you're out. Big one.
Mr. Chairman, I have to inform the, uh, board here that the first week of September, I will not be here.
Alright!
Everybody give the determination back?
By the time, she's not coming. My determination?
The one you read?
You want it back?
Yeah.
What do you want it back for? Okay, here you go.
You want, you got mine, right?
Yeah, we could.
I know what's in there. Oh, good, I got work, man, I got work.
I think Dotsey and the girls might be downtown tonight.
You got it, you got it, you got a deal, mom.